I'd like to call the meeting of the committee of home to order at 6:30. We start with Walco.
Michael Murray.
Here.
Travis Schultz.
Here.
Richard Darien.
President.
Sean Javitz.
Here.
John Flynn.
Here.
Nicole Hart.
Here.
Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here.
So, I'd like to ask the people of mine, I'd like to see if we could switch around a couple of the items. If we could jump to do number three, because we have some people here. Let's jump to number three under Parks and Recreation for review of the bids and award contract for the Toma Ice Center addition. And then we're also going to jump in later on others first, and then we'll start with the limits.
That's me, Kelly.
That'll be fine.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. I'm up here, Becky.
Yep, it's all you.
Okay, hey, first of all, thank you, everybody, very much. I appreciate you moving me up on the agenda. My hunting buddies also appreciate that I was able to stay in camp a little longer, so I really do appreciate it. It's about a three-and-a-half hour drive from where I am to Toma, so thank you very much for that consideration. So, I believe you all have a spreadsheet of the bids that we took on November 8th, and this was a rebid, as you know. We bid it in April, and the bids came in higher than what the city wanted to expend. And a couple reasons that we feel that way. The time of the year, April, versus now, contractors are a little bit hungry here and planning their workload for next year, and so I think it was, you know, wise that we rebid it. We did get, we broke the project down into 16 divisions of work. That's our Keller process. We feel that we get more bids that way rather than just bidding to general contractors, and local contractors that helps out that way also. And it kind of bore out with the bids we have here. I'll kind of go through the bid units by each one. Earthwork and utilities was Gurkey Excavation. You're all pretty much familiar with them. The division number two, the pre-engineered metal building, the low bidder was Olympic Builders. They were the concrete and steel builder on the fire and EMS facility. Asphalt, Matthew, they're kind of the only game in town, so to speak. Gas-in-place concrete was Gurkey. Then we have resonance floors, it's a finish on the concrete that makes it uphold a little better, a little cleaner. Masonry was Fowler and Hammer. They also did the masonry on the fire station. Very good contractor, we're very pleased that they were the low bidder here. Carpentry, again, a local contractor, Americon. They were the carpentry contractor, again, on the fire EMS facility. Aluminum storefronts, Corcoran. Sectional doors was Casey's. They also provided the overhead doors on the fire station. Athletic flooring, it's a rubber flooring in the locker room, that was Baseman Brothers. Acoustical ceilings, central ceiling. There's not a lot of ceilings on this project, just a few offices. And painting and finishes was MPI. The fire protection, I've got highlighted in yellow, I want to talk about that, and I'll come back to that in a minute here. Plumbing was Engel. HVAC was Wisconsin Mechanical, they did the plumbing on the fire station. And Kish Electric was electrical contractor. So, with all the bids, with everything, we broke the project down into a couple alternates. The youth hockey group wanted to have a club storage area and a dryland training, and that was kind of, you know, added to the cost of the job. It was something that I kind of call maybe scope creep. You know, we were hoping the original time when we bid it that we would reach our budget, but it did not. I think our total bids the first time around was $1,789,000, and with everything, you can see the bottom number would be $1,617,000. But we broke the project down into those alternates with the hope that possibly the hockey group can contribute to the storage and the dryland training if they want, if they so choose. But otherwise, the base bid, you can see the project total was $1,141,146.81. So, that's what, and Joe Prost and I were talking, kind of, we knew the general budget range that the city was, would go up to, and I think it was 1.2 or 1.15, something like that. So, I was happy that we came in under that by a little bit. But, so I'm going to go back to the fire protection. So, we only had one bid on the fire protection, that was Aern. And typically, you like to get at least two bids, three bids in each category. So, Aern also had, there were some irregularities in their bid. They did not have the alternates broken down, so we don't know what those two additions would cost specifically. They did not put in a cost for performance bond, and they're just, and also taxed. So, my recommendation is if this all meets your budget and you'd like to move forward, I would like propose to rebid the fire protection bid unit only. You'd have to do a bid notice on that. I guess I'll share with you, you know, it was a public bid opening, so Aern's number was about $29,000. So, hopefully rebidding that, it'll be less than that, or at least that amount and not more. So, that's what I have. We took the tax because we always want the bidders to include tax in their bid. Your tax exempt, of course, but a lot of times, some people put it in, some people don't, so we do that to create a level playing field, and then we deduct the tax from their bid. So, the bottom number I gave you, the 1141146, did show a $13,848 tax that we took out. So, with that, I'll kind of open it up for questions.
So, just an observation, Kelly, Lamont Kiefer here. Rebidding, it didn't really do much. We're right up in this, all we're doing is breaking out the alternates that weren't broke out before. But the difference of the bottom line, 1.6, and our original was 1.789. I mean, it was some, but I'm guessing you were hoping it would have been quite a bit more.
Yeah, I guess I was hoping it would be more, but, you know, $150,000 or whatever is, was worth the rebid, we felt. And I think, you know, the main objective is of the, you know, you don't have to do the, those alternates, so I don't know if that answers your question, Lamont?
No, but we, maybe if we had the alternates in there before, we could have just peeled them off, and it appears to me, we'd have been right down in that same somewhat scenario.
You're correct. Yes, you are.
Just an observation.
Question, of the four alternates that are proposed here, are you recommending any of them, Joe?
Right now, no. We'll be working with youth hockey to see if any of those, you know, moving forward, but right now, we're just looking for the base bid.
I would like to also find out on the alternate, so as an alternate four, we put it in here, we don't, we don't believe it's required, but when our electrical designer that prepared the plans, he said it was kind of a gray area if the, if we would have to, with putting this addition on, if we'd have to put a fire alarm system in the whole existing building plus the new additions. Your fire alarm contractor that's there right now said he doesn't think it's necessary, but we wanted to bid that just in case, so that was that alternate number, number four of $33,900. We don't believe it's necessary. Your local inspector would probably have to determine that.
So, I'm actually kind of direct this at Joe. Would your recommendation then be for the city, we go with the actual project total of the 1.141 million, and then if the hockey club decides that they want to do these additional items, then it becomes, the onus falls to them? From a fiscal standpoint?
Well, currently, we have 1.25% room tax allocated for this project, and that puts us at about $1,250,000. So, 114 gives us a little bit. We got to get the bids back for the fire sprinklers, that, and also if there's any bit of thing going on with the project where we can't meet the needs of alternate one with the storage area, and definitely can't meet the needs of the dry land ice. Talked to Kelly and hockey, you know, if something comes up with the Toma Youth Hockey Association, and they get a lot, and it's close, you know, maybe we could take that to the park board and see what other funding to help get, you know, maybe the storage or that, but right now, we're just looking to approve the base bid one, including what bid we get back from the fire sprinklers and award the contract and get things moving for that, so.
I would make the motion to move forward at the bid at $1,141,146,81.
Second.
Contingent upon the bid for the fire safety. That would be higher. In addition, yeah.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question for Mr. Keller. The alternate one is the storage, dry storage?
That's correct.
The cost to add that later compared to cost now, what do you anticipate that would be?
So, the alternates are included in the bids, the contractors would, are obligated to do it for the price that I show there for the alternate one? Otherwise, they have to forfeit their bid bond?
No, that's not my question, is if, if we don't do the alternate one now, if we decide to do it a year from now or two years from now, what kind of a cost comparison would you expect to see?
That's kind of a difficult question to answer. At all, you know, inflation is a big thing, material costs. I would say, if you want to put me on the spot here a little bit, I would say you're probably looking at six or seven percent more per year.
And really, in the alternate one, really, that's, it's, that $110,000 is the cost of basically putting the storage on.
That's correct.
And at six percent by next year, it might be in the 115,000 to 120,000 region?
Correct.
Just to clarify, Mike, what was the whole?
Well, my, my motion was to approve the initial project of $1,141,146,81 with the addition of the fire protection when we get that approved, which is estimated, I believe you said, anywhere between $20,000 and $30,000?
It was $29,000 was the Aern-only bid.
Okay. So, we, at the max, we would be at $29,000?
Yes.
And that falls within the parameters of where we budgeted?
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Abandon vote, no.
Only one vote, no. And motion carried.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, enjoy your hunt. Have a good Thanksgiving, appreciate all your help.
Wait, yeah, now, sit down, do your take, give.
So, the next item, I'd like to jump down to number 10, is a request by Melissa Shutter for consideration of granting her beverage operator's license.
Just give your name and address.
My name is Melissa Shutter, my address is 13149 Goliath Road, Toma, Wisconsin. I'm here because I want you to reconsider giving me my bartending license.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Oh, okay. I'm here because I want you to reconsider giving me my bartending license. When I filled out the application, I looked, I put the filing date down, which was, I believe, 4/7/2015. The actual offense when it happened was 8/22/2013, which is actually more than 10 years ago. And I'm not minimizing my OWI or anything like that, but in that time, I've done a lot to improve myself. I voluntarily, voluntarily went into treatment, inpatient treatment. I completed that, and I also did a year and a half of patient treatment. I haven't been in any trouble for, well, since that date. I just, I should reconsider. I know there's been other people that have felonies and granted bartending license, and I'd just like you to reconsider me.
Based on the time elapsed and our past history of looking at these, I would make a recommendation to approve.
Second?
I have a couple questions for you. You want a license to work where?
At the Bean Bar. My boyfriend owns it. I want to be their short staff. I want to be able just to fill in when they need people. It's hard to find good workers, responsible. Worked in healthcare for 17 years, I can handle bartending. I just don't want his employees to be overworked, and I'm happy when I have the ability to fill in certain hours to do it.
And your last offense was in November of 2016?
No, it was when it happened, it was August 22nd, 2013. It just took a really long time, it was in Dane Coney. It took a very long time to go through the court system, they didn't file it.
Yeah, the actual conviction date, 2016, the offense was 2013.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and you've been, you haven't had any since then?
I may have, I looked on C-CAP, I may have had a driving without a license, but I couldn't find that on there. I don't remember what happened with that.
So, I have a question. Chief, does that technicality make it fall outside the rules, the offense date versus the conviction date?
It's just broad, it's, we just apply facts to the ordinance. The ordinance says conviction date, not date of offense.
Okay, so it doesn't technically make it fall outside?
No. No, technically, it was the recommendation to deny it because the ordinance says that if you have an alcohol-related conviction, within the past 10 years, it's a felony, that they're not eligible to have a license. So, when I deny these, it's just a recommendation, I'm applying facts to decisions.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to get that technicality out of the way, if she falls outside.
The offense was committed in 2013, but for whatever reason, it took three-ish years to go through the court system. But the date of conviction was in 2016.
Which is what our ordinance reads.
Yes.
You have any other comments about this particular?
Nope, not at all.
You just applying the rules?
Applying facts to the ordinance, and then, here we are.
Sometimes you have a comment or something.
Yeah, if there's someone that I don't think should have a license based on our contact, I would tell you that. I don't feel that way. I'm indifferent to it. Outside the ordinance, I have no, no reason not to recommend it.
So, we have a motion? Did you say we had a second?
Yeah, Richard has a second.
Right. Richard, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah, and I'm just going to say, I did vote for this one, I normally don't, but this seemed to be real close to all the edges of the rule that we have granted before.
And the next item would be a request by Michael Crasper for consideration of granting him a beverage operator's license.
Howdy. My name's Michael Crapser. My address is 1102 Heeler Ave., Toma, Wisconsin, 5460. I did receive an OWI misdemeanor in 2000, well, my offense was 2020, 2020, 2021. It did finalize within the last, like, nine months, so unfortunately, but with COVID, it backed it up. It should have been pretty quick, but, I mean, I honestly, I don't drink a lot at all. If anything, I happen to go out, obviously, on the New Year's, and I made a mistake, and I have definitely learned from it. I do apologize for it, and just looking to, you know, I do own a business here in town as well, High Power Nutrition, over by US Cellular. I'm just trying to make a little bit of extra money to keep that business going, so, any consideration, much appreciated.
And I think this is one of those, again, where perhaps we need to revisit the statute because we're penalizing somebody for an action that occurred three years ago, but because of the delay in court systems, it falls into the parameters of a 12-month, and that's not fair to the applicant because what it takes in a court system, I mean, I got assaulted shortly after we opened in 2019, and that still has not been settled. So, again, I think in this situation, we're talking a 12-month misdemeanor, again, this happened in 2020, you said?
2020 to 2021, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, again, the statute is penalizing the person because of the delays in our court system. So, because of that, I would recommend approval.
I'll second that, Walter.
We have a motion and a second, by Richard. Any further discussion?
I have a follow-up question for.
I have a question for you.
Anything new from the state on the state licensing of bartenders?
Yes, there is a little bit of news that I had during my portion, but I can kind of quickly go over it.
But I think we need to step away, because that's not involved with this.
Okay, so you do have a business in town?
I do.
Fairly new?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And you have had no prior incidents with alcohol ever since? And this is just something, again, like the mayor said, it was in what year?
2020, 2021. It was New Year's Eve of 2020, so 2021, 11/30.
Well, I'll go ahead and give you a tip.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
We would need to go there, because that's not part of this.
Sounds good. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Aye.
Thank you. We would, for the two of you that are here tonight, we would recommend that you both be here tomorrow night, just in case there's any discussion that needs to go on further, it would allow you to handle it. But again, we will do our best and move it up in the, in the program.
Because sometimes things do change.
Yes, absolutely.
So, maybe we can, thank you, guys. So, maybe we can jump ahead and cover the approval of the limits. Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a motion to approve? Second, the Sean. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item would be Joe, participating in that for the program.
Good evening. Making it quick tonight, other parks, we just finished up winter rise and everything for the winter. Again, special thanks to public work for all their help with the different portion of our park projects this past fall at Veterans Park and One Bagel Park. Working with the contractors on the ballfield construction, if you haven't been out there, take a drive by, there's a lot of activity going on with drainage and drain tile and so forth. Boulevard Tree Program, we pushed that back to the spring just so that we didn't order trees when they had that dry spell, and then we didn't want to plant where there's no rain. But we'll be getting out there and planting trees in the spring for those who have requested them, and just working with the groups that have put up lights at One Bagel Park and Gillette Park. Recreation programs, we finished up our fall program outdoors, we're moving to our indoor programs there. We have open gyms, we have signups going on for youth basketball, adult basketball, and women's indoor volleyball, and continue to work on the fire station ambulance, doing some cleaning and getting some of that stuff, rest of the stuff out of there, so continue with that. Aquatic centers, winter rise for the winter in recreation parks, you can see the busy activities we've got going on there. This is our busy time with banquet's and different coincidences and different fundraisers and so forth, so a busy month of December coming up, as you can see listed there. Gymnastics is full tilt at the exhibit building with the high school, middle school programs, and then the ice center is busy with Toma Youth Hockey, high school hockey, figure skating, and also the woodmen, the woodsmen out there for their programs, a lot of activity out at Rec Park currently, so. Any questions or concerns?
How's the woods been hockey thing going?
Good, and just speaking with Toma Youth Hockey Group, I believe we are towards the top of the area in attendance. I know at the first is really full, but there continues to be a steady crowd there. I believe they're in fourth place in their group to try to make the playoffs, so a lot of season left to go. Oh, I think there's a lot, I don't know, I can't answer that one.
Okay.
But I think, believe, the top four make the playoffs in their group, and so, but seems to be going good, it seems to be working out okay with us, being in our recreation building. I know some of the renters that use the whole facility, you know, aren't overly pleased, but they've been accommodating and working with the groups out there for that, so thank you for approving, and hopefully get those locker rooms, they get moved over, and they continue to stay. I know they've done a lot of great things with helping local groups out with, whether it was volunteer for the food pantry, or helping hockey with the Learn to Skate for Free program, so. And they also helped us out move some gymnastics equipment, so we had them volunteer with us, so it's nice to get to know them, and they've been helping do some community projects as well, so.
Trying to get integrated into the community and help and show positive image of their organization. And one other question, how many trees do we normally get? People are probably going to be asking, since they didn't get any this fall, what is our number that we try to?
Out to the residents or that we order?
Well, that we order to get out, well, is there a difference?
Well, we usually have about, we usually budget about, we usually apply for grants and matching is about $3,000 worth of trees we get, which depending on the size of trees that usually gets us 15, 20 trees a year, but we do, we still have a few, so. We try to get good size, so. Try to accommodate the ones they have requested, and the other ones are put in the park, so.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like it is. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'll start with the first one everyone's dying to hear about, our update to the alcohol industry is, it's an assembly bill originally that had passed the assembly and had gone onto a senate committee. It did not pass committee, so what they did at the last senate meeting was that they amended a different bill, like, they incurred an amendment 8810, so they kind of put the information from the senate, or the assembly bill into the amendment in order to bypass the committee. And so, it did pass with some changes, and it is on the governor's desk at this point. So, it is not a law yet, but it looks like it's headed that way unless he details it, so more to come later on the specifics, but there were some other amendments in there that will affect the clerk's office, such as increased regulation with cigarettes and vapor product sales. We're going to be required to do background checks for those now where we don't currently. I'll have to get more information on how long is it going to be before the DOR is able to set up a department? What do those, what does it all look like? So, my guess is it won't be for at least a year or so, because it's going to take time, so things will remain as normal for us for a while, but I will continue to keep you updated as soon as I know. As far as information, also elections, it's been a while since we talked about elections, but we do have one coming up in the spring, and I did post the class, or the And I did put uh post the uh class or the uh the A Notice, I guess it's called. It's the very first one. That's the hey, there's going to be an election um on our website at tomaWI.gov. Also, there will be in the newspaper. The spring election uh will be held on April second, twenty twenty four, so you can mark your calendars if you'd like to know when that is. Uh, paperwork for those who are considering running for office or rerunning for office can be uh start to be circulated on December first. So at some point on or slightly before December first, you'll want to stop in the clerk's office if you're planning on rerunning. Uh, the offices that are running this time around are the even offices, so districts two, four, six, and eight, also mayor and judge. That's what we have on the ballot from a local standpoint. Please let me know. Uh, if you do not plan on rerunning, I do need you to sign something before the end of December uh to give to me. It's called a certificate of non candidacy, so that we can publish that our incumbent is not rerunning. So it's pretty important. Please visit me if you have any questions on any of that. Been quite busy on the HR side with the employee handbook. We finally have a finalized copy for you for tonight, so that's on the agenda. Took quite a lot of time, I know, but it's been a really long time since the last council approval, which was twenty thirteen. Twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, so it is past due. So all of the motions that councils have made over the years have been updated and those policies have been updated, so hopefully found that to be a little easier reading. We did eliminate some unnecessary language and took me a little, a little bit of time to get through it. We got it done. And then open enrollment is ended. And just to, you know, to keep you updated on our employee status, I was really happy to see that, you know, we had changed from VSP over to the State's Vision Plan. I had mentioned that last month. And we had a huge increase in employees signing up for the optional vision insurance, and that's all employee paid. It's not city paid. But it just goes to show that our employees are actually using the benefits that we're offering them, which is great. We also had a giant uh increase in the folks who picked up our optional accident insurance. So we went from something like twenty to close to forty, almost one percent increase there. So it's pretty great to see that people are using their benefits. And I think that's it for now. Just it'll be starting to be election stuff going forward and elections all next year. Tomorrow, I'll talk to about, more about elections than our polling place. It's on there. We talked about moving the permanent polling place over to to Rec Park, just for the space over there and.
Is there a presidential election that we're talking about?
There is a presidential election this next year, so. You could, it's only going to get worse over the next twelve months, I promise you.
And election.
Yeah, it um if we, I didn't mention that if we, so it's April second, that's the spring election, but if we need to have a primary, which could depend on a lot of things. There are all the county supervisors are going to be on that. They have them as well from the county side, the judges.
District.
Probably. I haven't received any from school district yet, but I think so. Uh, so if they have more than two for each of the open positions, then we will end up having a primary. And so we do have a primary. It will be on February twentieth, twenty twenty four. So we may have one in February. We don't know yet until after we get out the candidate paperwork back. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just a comment. Do you any, have any idea why employees took more advantage of their benefits? Was it promoted differently or it seems like a extreme?
Uh, it was extremist enough so that I noticed it while I was, you know, comparing last years to this year's. I think it has to do with a couple of things. Our accident insurance premiums actually went down a little bit. Not a ton because they really weren't real expensive to begin with. So I think what is happening is we've had a few people actually utilize the accidents insurance and word has kind of spread that, oh, they're really easy to deal with. That that was a pretty simple process. It wasn't too hard. And I got my, I got my money for chopping the tip of my finger off or, you know, I, this is a true story.
Not necessarily at home.
Oh, yes. Uh, this is if something happens to you at home, not a work related thing, but yeah. Um, so we actually have had had people who had, you know, random things happen, humans, and they utilized it and finding that it's actually valuable and it's not so difficult to make a claim. So I think that was part of it. Uh, I think with the pending wage increase, they might have a little extra to be able to give, get an extra, pick up that extra vision for their families. So that's nice. And then we changed vendors, which is an actual vision insurance and not just a kind of a discount program, which is what VSP was for us. So just the quality of the program that we moved to maybe had an effect. Nobody's really told me. I'm just guessing at this point, but those are some of the factors, factors that might.
Same cost for the vision?
Yeah, almost exact, almost exact.
So they're seeing price stability also. It's so like you can get in, you said one decrease, so, you know, you look at it a little bit and say, well, I want to get in some program and then they're just gonna, I'm just gonna be going up, up, up and see that it isn't going up, so get in because it's reasonable.
Right. Um, I'm just glad to see they're
Good product.
Using their, using their benefits.
Advertising themselves possibly. Okay. Thanks for looking for good product.
Thanks Becky. Thanks for the handful to add that you, I'm sure it was a lot of work for a month. So thanks. Now, next is Molly, the treasurer's report. Cash and investment schedule.
Okay, so uh the October thirty first cash and investment schedule, um, one major obvious difference, at least in my eyes, is that our general fund cash reserves uh decrease typically doesn't happen, but we're at that time of year where our last tax collection was July. Our state shared revenue payment actually came today uh in the amount of one point three five seven million dollars. Um, so there's just that little bit of lag where we don't have a ton of cash coming in, but our expenses don't slow. So we usually have to pull down the reserves and now we'll replenish it now that our state aid has come and tax collection starts at the end of next month again. Um, other than that, I would answer any questions you may have on that. And if there are none, um, I would ask.
Do we need a motion for that?
Make a motion to group cash and investments report.
Second. So you have a motion in the second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the next is the preliminary October thirty first twenty twenty three revenue and expenditures with comparison to budget.
It's a multiple, isn't it?
Yeah.
Um, so again, I would answer any questions that you may have on on those financials.
Anything jump out to you?
Not anything. Um, we do have departments looking really closely at their expenses right now, so we're doing some reclassifications where people wrote the wrong expense account on their invoice, so they're they're seeing that their accounts are over and so making some adjustments now that we're nearing the end of the year. People are really uh laser focused on their remaining budget amounts. Um, but otherwise, everything is pretty much on track. As far as we would expect.
Have a period around swan, you see a line where there's a budget item, let's just say it's ten thousand dollars, and there's nothing there. Are they? Are they in there for a reason or is there something that might be entered or are they just kind of fillers that we leave to help us? They have a little buffer in the budget?
We don't typically build buffers in. Um, there's are some line items that we do have to budget for and they may not actually occur during the year or uh, we're still experiencing supply chain issues, so there are purchases we thought we would have made that are coming to fruition and might have to be re uh moved ahead to next year. The other side of that is some of these are um journal entry based transfers between funds and they usually do those towards the end of the year. So some of these line items, you'll magically see now we're.
Combination of things, yeah. But they're not normally just there to, we don't just leave it so we have ten thousand and K?
No.
That's in a, that's contingency. We don't contingency move by line item.
Right.
Okay.
Um, then just a few other things for my department. Um, tomorrow night, obviously, is the budget hearing. Um, after we approve a budget, that kind of sets a few things in motion. Becky and I will work on filing the tax increment worksheet with the DOR as well as the levy limit worksheet. And then we have paperwork that we file with the county to get the tax bills ready for printing. Um, there have been a couple of transitions um with the county treasurer, and so we're not exactly sure what their timeline is, but we're going to do our best to help out wherever we can. Make sure that this all goes smoothly. Um, yeah, then we do payroll approvals based off of the approved budget. And then we will start compiling budget books and hopefully have those done by the end of the year, but we'll see. Um, mass transit, I have the city has been selected uh for a compliance review audit. I've been told those only happen usually once every five to ten years. Uh, and they are intense. So I am kind of consumed by that right now. Uh, Kirk is also going to speak later about the RFP that we will be presenting. Um, that's also been a little bit time consuming as we work on that transition. And it's that time of year where I file the grant application for our funding. So mass transit is kind of um eating me alive right now. And then debt service, we made our final debt service payment of the year today. So on to next year. Answer any questions anyone has?
Thank you for getting uh more current on the comparison.
Glad you noticed.
That's in your spare time, right?
Thank you very much, Molly. Appreciate it. Next up was Kurt.
Good evening. Uh, so the street department, uh, just still going around, uh, expecting storm inlets, uh, working on that. Uh, we did get the speed display signs installed on list of the streets, uh, west end of ET, La Grange Avenue, North Glendale, and Highway sixteen near Hollister. Tried to get up, um, cut up on our asphalt and concrete replacement throughout the city. Couple, one in place, uh, kind of hanging out there yet, but for the most part, we've got everything pretty well buttoned up for the winter. Our e-waste event was very successful. Uh, I don't know if you remember that, we partnered with our Dynamic Recycling. Dynamic Lifecycle Innovations, now Lacrosse, that's who we've been dealing with lately. We took over twenty thousand pounds of recycling at the aquatic center. We had two semi-trailers basically full. And they also took our, I think we had three pallets at the time for free. So that was a good incentive. We did um partner with them on a forklift, so they were using our equipment to load things up, but it was just great. Um, it's hopefully a lot of items that we don't have to pay for in the future to get rid of, so.
What, what kind of cost savings is that? I mean, do?
Oh, oh, I can tell you.
They had a pretty nice setup down there too. I took a bunch of stuff down. Had people jumped out, helped you, took it out of your car and put it on valves on where you are.
Looks like twenty seven hundred dollars for one and another three hundred. They have no charges listed on this, um, but it doesn't really make sense how they they have this listed. I would have to verify.
Yeah, because it was like ten, twenty dollars an item or something?
It's per pound and it, it depends upon the item, you know, um, like a computer hardware, they actually give you credit for some of those items because of the components that are there, but TVs and uh other items, we don't get any credit for.
Okay, so.
It's still significant. I I believe that we run uh it's quite amazing. Our like e-waste has gone down significantly. And we were expecting just the opposite because we don't charge. And we know we get other people from out of town bringing their items in, but our waste has went down. We went to a new person that handles that waste, so our costs have actually went down and um I'm, I think we're doing like one load every three to four months now, so it's helped dramatically, whatever's going on with the industry. Um, yeah, I think just the components that are banned and whether they're lasting longer or whatever the case, but this does help. Um, at the minimum, probably about three thousand dollars, I would say.
But we did tighten our policy some, didn't we? I mean, we used
The impound.
Take everything or we had large item and e-waste and everything, like you said, it was coming out of the woodwork. And we changed our policy some and it seems to be really working.
Correct. We've not been notified in of any users. Um, we even give some leeway on what is actually seen out there. But yeah, I think all those things have impacted uh where we're going with that. It's trending positively.
It's nice and we can pro- provide all the services and then we can do this annual event. I'm sure we're, it's going to be reflected in the future that all those events will be coming in, so our costs are going to go down.
Correct.
And hopefully take, people take big advantage of it and clean out a lot of stuff, so it should really help.
So, um, this is a new program that we have once a month, twice a month, calls it.
It's new to us with this partnership with this company.
Yeah.
I believe that they're going to try to do it annually. Um, they work as part of the same thing. I think they probably get reimbursed from bigger producers of these TVs. I, I I'm not sure exactly, but uh for the future, it will be annually, I think at best.
And it will be in the paper for us? Is that something the public can bring? I'm not sure how this all works.
Sure. We chose to put that on Facebook, uh, on our website, um, announced it here. Um, we just feel that we give a bigger audience with more of the Facebook, uh, website based.
And they take everything, furniture?
Electronics.
Oh, just electronics?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
E-waste.
Okay.
Well, one thing that's changed is uh, the electronics has got so much more compact and lighter weight from where it used to be. The old TVs, they weighed a ton.
Yeah, we see a couple councils yet, but pretty rare.
It must have some value to it to them because I mean, we haul a lot for this.
Yeah.
For them. But I mean, I bring stuff out of the Carolinas, about a wish to get in and all over the country too, on Alaska. So I mean, it's got some value that they need to bring in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Like some of the items we do get a credit for, but yeah. Uh, sewer department. So we did have a lab audit and a plant walkthrough. The DNR went very well. Uh, and we're still um working on getting some of the equipment installed that we purchased and it's sitting there. Uh, let's get to the lake committee and then come back to the water. Uh, next lake committee meeting is scheduled for January eighteenth. As I wrote this, we had that meeting on the sixteenth last week.
And then we'll have the annual meeting tomorrow.
Correct. Thanks. So we're looking for lead water pipes. Uh, it's basically a directive from the DNR that we identify the service that's coming into individual homes in the city. Our records uh allowed us to, started with roughly three thousand, thirty, three hundred services to identify. Our records that we had got us down to about six hundred and forty. So we sent individual mailers to six hundred and forty people throughout the city. So if you have a resident that asks you about this mailer, um, it's going to look like, look like this. So we don't want to send it to everyone or we don't want to put it on the website because it doesn't, it doesn't apply to everyone. And we don't want everyone calling in and and asking about this. So we identify the person that we need to get ahold of with a mailing and then we ask them, we have a couple of different variations. We have a couple of different variations, then either call us, set up a schedule that we come out, you take a picture, send it to us. We can, we can look at it most times and tell what kind of service that's there. So that all goes into our compiling of data to the D N R. That's, I just want everyone to be aware of, if someone asks you about this, um, it's, having a lead pipe service in your house is gonna be very rare. We moved the last lead service, um, that we know of back in about two thousand and six. So we did, we were fortunate enough to not have a lot of these services in town when they were popular in other places. But with the things that happened in Flint, Michigan, these are kinda some of the things and hoops that we're going through. To help identify, um, help the public, um, 'cause it's easy for them to request that we do this. Part of our permitting, so just kind of a heads up, um, with that.
I got one of those, so do I need to do something? My ladder was put in, and the city was there, so eight years ago or whatever, and watched Murdock drive the new plastic in and.
So everybody's service is gonna be a little different. You know, you could've had a repair that only came to the curb stop. 'Cause that's where the monies change, city money versus private money at the curb stop.
Yeah, they shot mine all the way in.
And so, so.
He was there and with, in the hole and worked with the. Shot off and everything, so you would think they would've known that mine is a plastic all the way into the house, and I don't have any luck.
So we don't know what you did for effects, we're going off of old records. So if you fix something, we don't necessarily know that you did that.
But you, but the crew was there.
And you were one out of thirty-three hundred people in the city, but.
That wasn't recorded at that time?
It wasn't.
So what do you need from me?
Just follow the instructions. And there could be a situation where they hook onto that outside your house, and you still have a lead coming underneath the footer or in your building. So the best place to identify is by the meter.
Outside meter?
Uh, most, they're inside.
Oh, they're inside, okay.
So this is put together, very explanatory. Um, and if there's anything that can't be followed with the three different options, the last one is for, give us a call and we'll come out. No charge, look at it, document it.
So you document it for record or?
Yeah, it's a requirement that the D N R is pushing.
Okay.
There's state and federal money out there to replace the lead. Thank you, Kirk.
Yeah, any questions?
Yeah, Kirk, um, when do you plan on, uh, shredding the brush file?
Uh, December fourth is when they're scheduled. And that would be a good example of a line item that sits there with no activity till later in the year.
One, one-time deal.
Hopefully, we get all of it done, we have a certain amount of money, we're gonna let them run as long as we can and, um, see if we can.
Stop when the money runs out.
Yep, that's how we've been approaching it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Scott.
Um, hiring process, I mentioned, uh, last month that we had three applications. Uh, it closed, we still have three applications, so, um, what we wanted to try and do, try and avoid was having to sponsor someone through the academy. Um, we're gonna have to do it, there's, we don't have the candidate pool that we were looking for. We do have one person left on the eligibility list, uh, we're gonna start a background on that person. Probably bring him in, um, January, if all the testing, the psychological and physical testing goes well. Academy starts in February, we graduate in June, we do a field training process, we get a police officer on the road in the fall of next year. So it works in our field, but, um, we'll be fine. Uh, good news, we took possession of our new canine, his name is Raiden. Bad news is there was a training accident, and his front paw that normally would sit like this, sat like that. So, uh, off to Madison for emergency surgery, and we got a full recovery with canine raid, so. He's got a cone on his head, he's not a very happy dog right now, but he walks around with a cast, but, um.
I think I saw him a lot.
Yeah, probably did. Yeah, we bring him to work, we wanna keep him acclimated and stuff and, and whatever, but he's, feel bad for the dog.
I was gonna ask him what, what happened to the dog, but since you said it.
Yep, that's, that's it, so.
Workman's comp claim.
Yeah, there you go, bring him in the city, he's already causing problems, right? Uh, the giving tree, everyone knows, I think, what the giving tree is, um, we have a, a tree in the lobby of the police department. Uh, there are cards on there for, uh, area youth, um, so you can take a card and, if you, if you're so inclined, and, and you can buy presents for anonymous children in our area. Uh, it's been up for less than a week, we started with a hundred and twenty names, there's about fifty cards left. Uh, they can be picked up in the lobby during business hours, Monday through Friday, uh, eight to four. Um, I'm guessing they'll probably be gone by the end of the week here. Um, our lobby is closed on Friday for, uh, the holiday. Speaking of the holiday, the holiday parade is Friday at seven P M. And it'll be the normal route, starts on Foster, ends on Holton, and they will be going southbound in the northbound lanes of Superior. A holiday train will be here, uh, stopping in Toma on December fifth, five-thirty P M to six P M. Uh, it's gotten bigger and bigger every year, so it's a pretty big turnout. So, uh, and as Kirk mentioned, the digital speed signs are up, thanks to D P W for doing that. Um, I've noticed that during the daytime, they're not as bright as I would like them to be, I think that's an adjustment that we can make. Apparently, I can connect into these things via Bluetooth, so trying to work our way through that, but we'll go around and try and, uh, make some adjustments on those, so. Any questions at all?
I haven't found them all yet.
What's that?
I haven't found them all yet.
Keep dragging, they'll yell at you if you're speeding.
What, what time is the holiday parade, sir?
Holiday parade, seven P M. Anything else? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
The first item is approval of the change in the city atonement insurance contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion on the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most, many opposed, motion carried.
Zabulski.
Already did item number ten, number eleven, so let's jump to number twelve. Request by the Poisoned Girls Club from the City of Toma to waive all permit fees to include all mechanical plumbing and construction permits with a pro- proposed remodel of nine seventeen Superior Avenue.
Move to approve.
Second.
What is the dollar amount in the, in code?
Yeah, Dean, I'm not sure what the dollar amount is on those yet. Not all of them have been, um, submitted. And the only thing I would make sure of, part of the motion, is we do not cover the commercial electrical permit fee, 'cause that's a contractor's service. Either way, we got to pay that.
I would amend, to not include the commercial electrical.
It is the second, oh, amend also?
To not include the commercial electrical, 'cause we have to pay some. amended.
So my amendment is motion, does it not include the commercial electrical?
What was your?
I amended it to not include the commercial electrical.
So, any further discussion?
This is pretty standard procedure for nonprofits? Shane, is this?
I would say this is, we've had a couple now that have been approved. Um, historically, I'm not sure in past years if we've had approvals on these or not. Lamont, I know the last couple of you guys have, um, paid for nonprofits.
We did one a couple months ago for Habitat and Humanity.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number thirteen, resolution to remove the contract for the city employees, F S A slash D H C.
So I, I can talk to this.
Yeah, what is it?
So, the city has consistently for a while now had a flexible spending account or dependent healthcare account, which is F S A or D H C. Which allows employees to take money out of their check through payroll deduction, uh, before taxes, and put it away into an account. Either used for medical purposes or the dependent healthcare is used for daycare. And then they can use the money in that account to sp- pay for specific things, either medical or dependent care, with tax-free money, is what that is. There's limits, you can only put in so much per year, uh, and if they don't, if they terminate employment, they lose it. If they don't use it all up by the end of the year, uh, they lose it, other than the six hundred dollar carryover now, something like that. So it's the same plan we've had for a long time, but the company that we were with, B P A, actually got bought out by Point C. So now we're having to just redo the resolution, saying that we will use their services.
We're staying with the.
We're, we're staying with them.
Just with the new pair.
Same, same plan, different vendor.
Pretty much, yeah.
But the parent vendor, I mean.
Yeah, it's just a new, a new company name, basically.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, I like, second by Molly. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, number fourteen, is secondhand article and jewelry dealer licenses, application for, to all of America.
Move to approve.
Back for Toma.
Sorry, who made the motion?
Motion to approve by.
Lamont.
Lamont.
You can all second.
And a second by Sean, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number fifteen, request to utilize economic development funds to contract land law and associates to complete the city atonement comprehensive plan update.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion to approve, I like, second by Sean, any further discussion?
Is this something required in the comprehensive plan every so many years, or where are we in, um, since the last?
So we completed the last comprehensive plan update, two thousand and thirteen, and every ten years is the target, um, to get those updated. Uh, so we're, we got a recommendation from the L R P C and the planning commission to utilize the economic development funds. To, uh, have, we have to help us assist with finishing that comp plan. Um, and when I put this on the agenda, um, I had forgotten that we had actually budgeted ten thousand dollars for this in this year's budget also. Uh, I had a discussion with Molly, uh, last week and, um, discovered that. So I, I honestly don't even know if we're gonna have to use any of these economic development funds, 'cause we already had them, we set aside in the budget. But I would still like the ability to use those, just in case we do get over that ten thousand dollar amount.
And we took it right to the end, so it's time to do it?
Okay, so a motion to approve in a second. Ten thousand, it was ten thousand dollars, is that what it, wait, is there, there's no dollar on it, is there?
No, it's just requiring.
The recommend.
Go ahead.
The recommend, we sent from the L R P C and the planning mission was to use the economic development fund up to ten thousand dollars.
So it's up to ten thousand dollars. So any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number sixteen, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly bills.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Sean, second by Lamont. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, approval of city atonement personnel.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Mike, second by Sean. Any further discussion?
Did everyone read it, word for word?
Do you wanna start reading, Becky?
Yeah.
I didn't know, thank you, right?
It took me a year to get through this, I've been working on it for about a year now, so.
Yep, gonna trust that you did a good job.
The, the one thing.
Honestly say I did not read every word of it.
That's okay, I, I do wanna let you guys know, this will become a living document, so as we make changes to personnel policies. My plan is to bring it back right away, get it edited, and then quickly get those new versions out, the old ones down, so, um.
So, how much has changed since the last?
Well, I mean, even in just the past few months, we've had some personnel changes that were approved here at console. Um, things like, um, I mean, it went back last year, the vacation, the full raids. We had the, um.
Okay.
Comp time, uh, removal for salaried employees and the wording to keep that at the forty versus some of the.
I would've really had liked to see what was and what we changed.
Yeah, it was kinda difficult, because there was so much change that it would've been a five-hundred-page council packet. So I didn't put the old one in there, but I certainly can give you a copy if you would like to.
Well, I, I'm just curious to know what has changed, the last policy.
Well, it would be all the changes that, again, that the council.
They've, they've all run through the council, so there's nothing changing in the policy book that we haven't already approved.
I know, but, I mean, how, how long, how many times do, in council meetings, that we really, it comes three, four, or five times? And I'm sorry, but I don't really remember a whole lot of things that come out of this.
Yeah, I mean, there were so many changes that I had to make, there were things in there that, there was very wordy language that didn't need to be there. I've written a handbook before, it takes a while, but it, you know, it needs to be in simplified language, employees can get to look at, understand, and then move on with their day. Um, it was very, I don't wanna insult any lawyers out there, but it was kinda lawyerly, if you're gonna read it like that, you know, instead of.
I can always come and see you.
Yeah, absolutely, anytime I can hand you a copy of the old one or the new one, when you're gonna stop and stop, and I mean, I.
I mean, it's no, it's not a big deal, I, I just would've liked to see the changes.
And I will make sure that that happens going forward, there was just so much, it's been ten years.
Yeah.
That it was almost impossible, because things had to be moved around, and I removed whole sections of unnecessary language that weren't a policy, it just didn't need to be there. And so there was, there was quite a bit.
My last question, employees get to see this?
Absolutely, yes, in fact, it is my intention that we'll get a lot of paper copies, uh, all printed out once it's approved. And have available for employees, but we're going to have training checklist, uh, check-offs.
Yeah.
That will be kept in my files, so that I'll know that every employee has signed off, that they've received a new copy. Uh, and then I would like, my plan is to make a section on our website for our employees. It will be gated or anything, but anybody will be able to get to it, but it'll be specifically for employees, it's on public record anyways. Um, a copy, the most recent copy of the handbook will be there, links for benefits information, or claims information, just stuff that a place needs. They can get to it anytime, even at home, you're sick, and you wanna know how this works, you can go there and get to it. So that'll be my next project that I'm working on.
Just so long as, you know, they get to read the new one and.
It's absolutely, they're going to get it, uh, either in digital or in.
Okay.
Are they all just gonna get it sent out digi- digitally, or are they gonna have to ask for whatever form they want?
Well, I'll probably make it available digitally for everyone and email it out to everyone. I have the, all the full-time employees, I email this to them, but I will also have paper copies available for managers who know that their people don't really like email. Or something, they can give them out, because, uh, we've talked about it a little bit, but I will have actual checklist per department to have each employee sign off by their name. So we know that every, nobody was missed.
So there's no date on this, but wouldn't you?
It'll be, it'll be tomorrow's date.
Okay.
Well, we have a motion to approve in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. And for eighteen, mass transit, shared ride, vendor selection, contract award, and lease agreement.
Well, I said, uh, it's quite the process for R F P.
Molly said, it's quite the process for RFP, so there is one mistake in the set staff report, the vendor is from Nielsville, and I indicated Marshfield, so that is incorrect. Basically, committee was formed, I believe that that analysis is attached from the evaluation committee as well. Abby Vans, out of Nielsville, was a successful vendor that's selected. I guess, we're just here to inform you that with the DOT's process, you don't necessarily have a lot of say to go outside of their process with RFP, so this is the vendor that we will be going with. And the lease agreement is detached for the vehicles and the short version of the contract that references the RFP, which is a binder that's about that big, for the requirements for the program. Probably the bigger items that have changed are, we tried to add additional hours, went from four hundred to four hundred and fifty per week in the document. We did require an additional vehicle to be on staff for the vendor as well. Those were some of the recommendations that we went into the RFP, trying to accommodate and maybe help with service times, things of that nature. We met with Abby last Thursday, very impressed with their organization so far. They will be helping us to try to make some recommendations on where we can show some more benefits, if possible, to the program. They've just, they referenced Black River Falls and some of the things, and how they helped them out, so we're encouraged to go through that process, onboarding. We are looking at, later, and I think December eighteenth kind of rings a bell, when they would actually start taking reservations for their transition for first of the year. Obviously, these are all things that we discussed prior to approval, but those are started the onboarding process, and, yeah, I guess we're looking for the approval now. This would be the last piece that we need to send to the DOT for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, Richard, second by Mike.
Question. Is this replacing Toma Transit? Or?
Toma Transit is still the, the service, we just have a different vendor that's gonna use that.
Okay.
Question, will Abby Vans be running some of their present operations in conjunction with Toma Transit, or are they gonna keep them separated?
All we've discussed is the RFP, the mass transit taxi shared ride service, not sure what their other operations would be doing there. Is that?
Yeah, I did.
For a wheel?
No, um, they, they obviously operate, um, a medical transport service, that service still exists, it would be a separate number and everything for booking, so it's still separate from Toma Transit, but Abby Vans will continue their, their medical transport business.
So Abby, uh, only does medical?
No, they also do some cab service, straight, straight cab service, true.
Depends on what community they're in, they have, they have medical in some, they have cab in some, they have both in some.
Right, for us, we're getting them for our Toma Transit.
And it would be the same, if you're looking for a ride, you would call Toma Transit, if you're looking to book Abby's medical transport, you would contact Abby at a different number, so those two things will remain separate, just operated by the same.
And the vans will still say Toma Transit on it.
Our vans will still say Toma Transit on it.
Okay.
Is there any, I, I know we had all kinds of complaints, and we tried to remedy them, was there anything that felt short in this new one that, do you think, or did we get real close to achieving all we wanted, because there, I mean, we had tons of complaints to work with to try to move this program forward? Did we achieve?
I don't think the framework really has changed a whole lot.
I think the benefit comes in, in an additional fifty hours, so that's, that's a huge plus.
Yep, hours was one. Is there an office here, or no?
No.
No office, they're gonna still stay, booking from a distance, Richard. Seem to be caused some problems having a, a home base.
I think.
Not connected to the community.
Some of those same discussions we had with them, I think their process is gonna be a little bit better, that's at least what I anticipate, but until they actually start and we see, I, I think we're gonna see the process with educating the public, we're gonna see a fairly significant transition between the service that we have now and what we're gonna be getting, and some of the requirements that, that vendor is going to place on the people that are using the system as well.
Okay, there'll be some education for the public.
Yes.
But hopefully a positive.
Positive and similar in nature to other cities that operate the same.
That should help improve the service, especially time.
We hope to.
Like, well, on paper, I mean, I'm assuming that's how the rating came, that they moved out of, I see our old vendor was still quite high in the rating system, so, because that we had a total failure before, but it, it didn't function well at times, and hopefully, yep, increased hours and efficiencies within our new company will help solve some of those problems. Thank you for putting in a lot of work, I know.
Well, it's still, as Molly said, there's still a lot of work to do, especially when we start that onboarding, so it's not over by.
Okay, not, okay.
It's actually probably just scratching the tip of the iceberg, so to speak, so.
Thank you very much, I know it's really important to some people, especially, you know, so, thank you too, Molly. Now we're just left with one more thing.
I think Richard had a question.
Any questions?
With this new contract with Abby Vans, the extra fifty hours, is that gonna be a change in hours of operation, or is that gonna be added into the current hours?
I think both, we're gonna add fifty hours a week, we anticipate that, and with it, there'll be a change, or in addition to certain times throughout that twenty-four-hour period. We anticipate that, we, we would hope that we can actually cut that four hundred and fifty down and get more direct times when we need to have that service out there.
You mean like in the six to ten morning hours, and?
The.
Two to six in the evening?
We hope that.
To have the two and from work hours?
We hope that they're gonna be able to provide us that feedback in that transitional period, where we can have some potential to cut back hours at certain times, and not just have a vehicle on standby in case someone needs to use the service.
Because they have a way to do that, right, they manage that part of when, when the time is, how many are out at a certain time?
Of course.
Their management.
They, they take, I think, our lead to start with on some guidance from past, but yes, I, they still have that flexibility.
And it's still twenty-four hours, right?
Correct, twenty-four, so.
Time for us to have a three, six, and nine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we need a motion to approve.
We gotta vote, we gotta vote on the.
Oh, we have to vote on that? I thought it was.
Motion by Yerington, second by Murray.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
No, no, no.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Council meeting, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Michael Murray.
Here.
Travis Schulz.
Here.
Richard Yerington.
Present.
Sean Zabinski.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Nicole Hart.
Here.
Lamarc Kiefer.
Here.
Molly Peters. Here. Dean Peterson.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to the 2024 budget hearing, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to approve, second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we will open the meeting at six thirty-five, we move on to the 2024 budget hearing summary.
All right. Travis, what do I want, I just hit your screen. Okay, thank you, so, just a few highlights for the 2024 budget, it's kind of hidden on this screen and this screen, but our net new construction, which dictates how much we can increase our operating levy, was approximately 1.9% for 2024, which is down significantly from 2021, but it's up over the past few years. That brings us, I gotta figure out how to move these people.
Can you, to the left, to the left of there?
Okay, so, that brings our operating levy to 4.2 million, and our levy for general obligation debt at just over 1.9, for a total levy of $6,111,112. That levy then is broken up for the general fund, 3.7 million, that includes our police, our fire, our inspection department, all city hall operations, the council, it is the parks and recreation, our streets department, our airport, public works, as well as, who am I forgetting, it's a big one, I think that's just about it. Then the library is around 296,000 of that, mass transit gets 45,000, the senior and disabled services is at 73,000, and then the debt services, I put it out, 21,000. So our levy per $1,000 of value actually goes down one penny this year, and our budget workshop originally had gone up, our, what is the word I'm looking for, our assessed value did not have a manufacturing role in there, we had done the budget workshop so early in the process that the state didn't have the manufacturing role accounted for yet, so when I plug that in, we're at $7.66, so on a $200,000 home, the tax for the city portion is $1,532, which is actually $2 less than it would have been last year. So that's just the city's portion, there's obviously the county and the school districts that will go into that, but we hope we did our part to keep that tax level for the citizens, which is our goal. Then this is just the summary of the budget, which people can see in the packet if they want to look in greater detail, I won't go over that line by line, that's the general fund, and then this is all funds. So I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone would have.
We just need to pause for a minute.
Okay. I actually need to exit the Zoom and, and log into the correct Zoom for the meeting, we had one for the Lake District, and then a separate Zoom for the common council, it's the same account, but I just want to make sure that we're not missing anyone, so anyone who's currently on our Zoom, if you could log into the later, the actual agenda link on your packets for the common council meeting, we'll be right back with you, if you could go ahead and exit and correct, log into the correct Zoom.
Patience on that, I'm gonna give it just a minute, because I see some names that were on before that are not on now, I'm hoping we can give them just a minute to make it accessible for them, hum some background music like on an elevator.
Yeah, it's the mouse, do you want me to?
No, no, I just thought it was like some desk of a question.
Well, we're gonna move forward this part of the people I saw on prior, I know are on for a different portion, this is where we would open for public comment, if anybody would like to speak regarding the budget, please step forward, state your name and your address. Seeing none, we will move on to, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Yerington, second by Zabinski, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is closed at six forty-four, I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2024 budget.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Schulz, second by Zabinski, any discussion?
Question, is it possible to revisit pay scale, as far as the distribution of the, the increase in salary at a future date, other than tonight?
I don't believe so, not, not that it's already been approved by the council.
It's still possible to reconsider, is it not?
Unless somebody changes their vote.
Would have to be whoever voted for the yea.
Would have to change the name.
Would have to bring a motion.
Or someone that was not present.
My understanding of the rules is it would be someone.
That voted, that would change their vote.
Right, that voted in favor for it, since it was already heard.
Yeah, in order, in order to bring discussion back, it has to be a change of, of, of vote.
Motion reconsider, motion, yes, motion reconsidered by someone that was voted for the action, or on the winning side, so to speak, of whichever way it went, yea or nay.
I believe, is anybody looking to change their vote? If not, we'll move on, I would entertain, uh, do we have the motion? Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, uh, moving on to the parks and recreation, uh, entertain a motion regarding the bids and a, a word of contract for the Toma Ice Center addition.
Move to approve with adding addendum, our alternate one. I think if we postpone that to two or three or four years down the road, it's gonna cost us double or more by the time you bring contractors in to bid on a small project.
Uh, hi, this is Kelly, can I comment on that right now?
Sure.
Uh, Richard, last night, I, you had asked a question, but I thought the percentage increase would be a before next year, and after the meeting, I thought to myself, I made a mistake by telling you it would only be 7%. Uh, it will be, I'm guessing now, not guessing, predicting 20 to 30% increase for the same reason that you said, a smaller project to come back, I believe the costs will go up somewhere in the 20, 30% range. So, thank you for bringing that up, I was gonna comment to that, thank you.
His motion was to approve according to addend, uh, addendum one?
Adding alternative one.
The alternative one on there.
I, I would second that, if I, if the, if the cost, if you could just remind me, what would the cost on that be? Just to do it all now, I'm sure the room tax.
One million extra, oh, one, 110,000 dollars.
Yeah, so a motion and a second into the discussion, uh, I believe we are at 1.25 million? So, that takes us in excess, then where then do we draw the excess? Where would that money be drawn from, for the excess in order to accomplish the proposed? Correct. Yeah, we'd have to find the money, so.
So that's projected room tax in that one year, right?
Well, the, the thing is, is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong on this. I mean, we're, we're at, we're at 1.25 million, this exceeds 1.25 million, this proposal. Correct. Where do we come up with the money?
And when you say the money is excess, what would that mean?
About, well, because you gotta take in that, it's about 22,000 above, cause it isn't about 1.277? Plus, plus the, and then you have 21, yeah, the 30,000 for the fire, so you're talking an extra $50,000 above what we'd budgeted.
And so what we figured is that 1% of room tax will cover about $1 million of debt over 20 years. So we've given them 1.25%, which we have calculated should cover about 1.25 million over 20 years. So that's where that number is coming from, that's, it's not in one year, or it's, it's to cover the debt payment on that amount of debt over the next 20 years, based on an average.
Is there an additional, um, excess for shed and how the, the other excess as a one?
So if I could just rewind a little bit, this was rebid, the first time I talked about, we bid it all in one package, and it come back a 1.7, and we could not afford that with the 1.25 that the park board recommended and the council approved. So we went back and rebid it as the two locker rooms, which is what we need to upgrade the facility for the users there, for the future of the building. In the storage, yes, we would utilize it, um, but we put on as an alternate, as well as a dry land ice training as an alternate, to see if it would meet our needs under that 1 point, the 1.25% of room tax, it came in higher. Um, like I said, we would have to figure out where the funding would, would come from. Um, right now, we're at, with alternative one, it's 1.277073.95, but that's not include the rebid of the sprinkler, the fire, uh, sprinkler system and that, so we can't just assume that's gonna be. So we're figuring that's gonna be around 30 grand, that's what it come in, could be a little higher, could be a little lower. With conversation with the Toma Youth Hockey Club, you know, obviously they would like the stores, the dry land. Once the bids have come back, we've had conversations about, maybe they can go get a donor, maybe they can come up with the funds. Talking with Keller, we have about, you know, 30 days or something to, to figure out if we wanna come back and add alternate one. Or maybe there's someone knocks on Hockey or our door and says, hey, that dry, dry land ice training looks really great, we'll donate for that. So we have a little bit of time, not a lot, because we gotta get things moving, but there's a possibility, so. We wanna get at least the, the base bid awarded, so we can get moving on the contract, the, the major, you know, um, supplies, things like that, get this project going, because Rec Park, as you know, we got the fair tractor pull, you know, shows, it's, you know, we gotta work it in to make sure we're, we're moving along fast with, with the construction, so. I mean, I'm all for it, Richard, but like I said, we, we, we have our budget for this project that the park board we have allocated, and we're, we're over with that, so we just have to figure out how we pay for that, but hopefully, you know, put a little bit on Hockey, they've been great partners with us, maybe they can come back in 15, 30 days and say, hey, we found the money, you know, let's, let's add that to the project, so that's where we're at.
For the council, what this would mean is that with this, uh, motion, it is the approval of what's been budgeted, plus an additional 57 to 60,000 dollars that would have to be found somewhere. So we have budgeted 1.25 million. If with, with the, with the motion, we, we would have to locate an extra of 57 to 60,000 dollars.
Well, now that we have more discussion, is there a change, is there a way I could, I'm good with the original project, but I didn't understand.
So we still, because of motion and second, we have to, we have to, we have to vote on the motion. So I have a question, Mr. Yerington, do you know, did you have a place where that money was gonna come from?
No, I don't have a specific source, uh, of it funding. I know Joe mentioned the possibility of some fundraising by the different organizations, but, uh, specifically, I don't have a specific source, but I know that's gonna cost us a lot more if we're gonna do it three, four years down the road, which is what they want. It doesn't make sense to delay the projects, that's like doing half a project, it just doesn't make sense to me.
But when you don't have the money, it isn't.
Oh, I'm sure we can find it someplace in the budget, even if it's out of the contingency fund. Or we take it out of ARPA funds, I think it would even qualify for that.
Okay, and go ahead, Zoe.
So, is ARPA available for any funding for this, or not?
I believe the improvements of a city-owned building would qualify for ARPA, if, if you guys chose, um, that is the best choice for those funds, there's approximately 350,000 remaining.
So why would we, I mean, that's what it's there for, uh, projects, not for looking at recreation.
That's your decision.
Well, there you go, you have ARPA money available too, for the additional.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion denied? Would anybody else like to make a motion regarding the, uh, bid and award? Make a motion to accept the base bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Kiefer, and a second by Schulz, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. At this point in time, is there anyone desiring to appear before the council? If you are, please step forward and come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and we'll, uh, we will remind you that, uh, you are given three minutes to address the council.
Name is Matthew Markin, I'm at 916 King Avenue, general manager of the Microtel Living Suites, Burge Hospitality. Some of you may know me, I'm a community member here, I've been living in this town my whole life. Um, and coming to the council today to raise a concern about the, um, occupancy of our town, the draw factor of Toma in itself. Tourism is something that I, uh, take very seriously, I grew up, uh, in this town, just, you know, selling rooms at a young age of 17, and here I am today, I'm 33, and I run a hotel by myself, my grandmother's no longer with me. But we just kinda discovered that, uh, you guys are adding rooms to the town every 10 years or so. Um, I may bring this up, the Hampton and the Hilton, uh, Brain, Brand, and then we have the IHG Holiday Inn Brand, they've just added a bunch of rooms over the last 10 years. Um, is anyone on the council aware of our RevPAR in this town over the last 12 months? Revenue per available room. My competitive set is down 30% this year, over last year, 30%, that's revenue per available room. You just talked about a budget for 20 years, and these, from these hotels and the taxes that are gonna come from it. I don't know how you expect to do that when this town is hemorrhaging money out on that end of town from these hotels, not having anybody in them. Any of you drive around in the town at night and look at our parking lots? No, they're empty. This is a sad thing, I've been selling rooms here longer than anybody in town other than one lady, but she hasn't run one hotel like I have for this long, okay? So since 2009, I've run one singular building, selling 60 rooms every night, every single day, for this long, okay? And we have a problem right now, there's nobody coming to this town, you need to do something, you need to have a, a plan. Uh, there needs to be a draw after, uh, supplementing it with Hockey, and waiting for military to come around, is not doing it. The only people stopping by this town are people that are here for one night, you know, they're just passing through. Um, this town could use a convention center, I'm gonna say that, um, 3, 4, 5,000 people, kinda like a lacrosse center. You could use it, you have enough hotels here, you have room to expand restaurants, this town is growing, and it's not doing anything to up the ante on the room side. My rooms are down $15 per room this year than last year, and all I've done is stuck money into my hotel. This is a huge concern, and it shouldn't be, cause I have a lockdown on everything that I do at my hotel, and the people that work for me, and the people I work alongside with, and when I'm having to call people off work because we don't have enough rooms every night, this is a deep concern of mine, okay? I have no recourse, I've done everything I can here. And you keep allowing Ruth Stomp to build hotels in this town, this will detriment the rest of us. That's why you find, uh, several of these owners are out there selling their places right now, and that is not good. So, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else desiring to appear before the council tonight? If not, we will move on. Um, I would entertain a motion regarding the request by Melissa Shutter for consideration for granting a beverage operator's license.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, by Yerington, second by Peterson, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion regarding the request by Mo, uh, Michael Krabscher for consideration of granting him a beverage operator's license.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Uh, motion by Peter, second by Zabinski, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here tonight, uh, I think you just reach out to Becky and she will get stuff taken care of for you, okay? Tomorrow, probably.
Yes, you can try us tomorrow, we'll see if we can get it ready for you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be live.
Uh, moving on to reports, the mayor's report, uh, just invite anyone that is available to stop over to Murray's on Main on Thursday for the community Thanksgiving dinner, um, in memory of Ed Thompson, former mayor of, of the community. And, uh, he's, he put it and wanted it continued, and so we are carrying on the tradition over there. Uh, the food will be served at 11, uh, if anybody wants to volunteer, they are more than welcome, I'm thinking 10 o'clock would be good. Um, and, uh, you can help serve, you can help deliver, you, all sorts of things you can do. Um, it's a really wonderful time, a lot of people that don't have, uh, a lot of family, um, and even those that do love to come and spend a few hours and, and, uh, and truly make it a Thanksgiving. I'll do my best to have the Packer game on up in the, in the banquet room also. Um, that being said, I wish everybody a, a very happy and peaceful Thanksgiving, and we will move on to the senior executive team report.
Good evening. Um, as you can see, there's a laundry list of things that, uh, SET did this last month. We met with Horizon Development Group, um, they provided some grant funding out housing opportunities. Uh, wasn't quite a fit for this year, cause the deadlines are coming up pretty soon, but, uh, another tool in our toolbox to utilize, uh, that company in the future. Continuation of planning commission, LRPC, uh, with Vanderwall and Associates, working on Ellers, uh, to discuss projections and final financial plans. Uh, we expect a comprehensive presentation in December, meaning for those. Uh, we also met with NASA in regards to the, uh, long-term rental agreement or land, um, and we're waiting to hear back from them on that, uh, project, and it sounds like they, um, may be looking at other land opportunities, um, so we'll wait and see where we end up with that. Uh, we do have, uh, the Superfund Site, uh, solar field, uh, we just haven't got that back uh, for, uh, presentation, but that will be coming shortly. Uh, we did reach out to them for some, uh, tweaks on their, uh, language in the contract, and, uh, still working through that changes. And meetings, uh, library, library board, CVB, planning, ad hoc, and, uh, then the other bigger item that we worked on or are still working on is the mass transit uh, with the new RFP provider, so, have any questions?
Just one for that, um, ground field, the solar thing.
Yes.
Just, um, in the contract itself, we should be really cautious to make sure, I would prefer if the city didn't own the panels, we would be better, like, if you leased them, because you don't wanna be responsible for disposable panels, cause solar panels are hazardous waste, very hazardous waste. So, it's kind of ironic, it's on the Superfund Site, and you don't wanna end up with a bunch of things that, you know what I mean, there, people do it all the time, a lot of them in California are leased for that purpose, then when you're done, they take them back to disposal, cause they have special facilities to process them, but if you own them, like if you're a homeowner, you buy them, and you have them sometimes, it's a real problem for you.
Penny may remember, but as I remember, it is a lease, and they will be putting up a bond uh, for the end of life.
Sure.
Replace, not replacement, but termination of contract where they have disposal, I believe that's how it's worded, so.
And I know that you had mentioned that before, and we tweaked that particular part of the contract to, sorry. I believe we have it covered, we'll double check, obviously, before we sign it, but I know that you had raised that issue, and so that was in my head when we were tweaking it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, we'll move on to public safety. Good evening, Chip.
Good evening, everyone. Well, let's go over a couple bullet points here, you got my written report, if you got any questions, let me know. Um, fire-wise, um, I'm going to start a hiring process in December, hopefully, uh, onboard some people, uh, January, February-ish, so just, uh, be aware that I'm gonna start that, uh, process. Um, October 30th, uh, we battled a structure fire at 319 East Council Street, it was a vacant structure. It was recently told it's a total loss, uh, still under investigation, if you hadn't heard, so. Uh, vehicle-wise, um, we had our annual pump testing performed, um, on November 13th, and all the engines passed, uh, pump testing on our apparatus. EMS-wise, um, we're all currently at full staff, so, uh, we're sitting pretty good there right now. Um, starting our union negotiation process tomorrow morning, so, uh, hopefully we can get, and get through that here before the end of the year and get that ratified. Um, vehicle-wise on the ambulance, uh, department, um, I've been talking about unit 269, that's the oldest ambulance. Been waiting for the, uh, remount center to get with us, they finally notified us, they're gonna be taking that unit, um, in the middle of December, it'll be gone for about 90 days, and then we'll have our newly remounted, uh, ambulance back to the city, and that headache will be over with, so. Something I just want you to be aware of, uh, the VA has changed their urgent care department out there, uh, just as of recently, so their level of care. out there, just as of recently, so their level of care has changed out there, and basically what that means for us is we're responding out there a lot more. Nothing that we can't handle, we have monthly meetings with that, with the VA operations out there, just wanted you guys to be aware of it, the VA has great insurance, so we're making more money running out there, but we're running out there much more than what we were over the past years, I should say, so. Last thing I wanted to bring up was on the emergency management, the other hat that I wear, the state of Wisconsin, I think the mayor got an email on it, a few other department heads, is offering integrated preparedness training that's available via virtual, it's a four-hour class, it's on two days, so there's four hours on one day, four hours on the following day, it's all virtual, it's really something that city government should try to have some of that type of training, and when you can do it on the TV at home or whatever, I know the problem is, is that it's during working hours, and it's in February sometime, so, but if you're interested in that, please let me know, I can get you the information, and it just helps you get signed up for that, so, it's a, it's a good class, and that a council should probably sit through once, so.
Are there fees, or is it just...
It's all free, yeah, according to the state of Wisconsin.
Just a sign up?
Yes, yep. So, that's all I got. Any questions?
Question, the increase in calls to VA, is most of those transfers to Toma help?
Yes, yes, they're, I would tell you, probably they all are, yep, and they're all nine-one-ones, so. Yep. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. All right, we'll move on to the senior disabled, good evening, Pamela.
You have my written report. Just a reminder that the senior center will be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. I know I said this last meeting, but it's worth repeating, we have a resource contact information booklet, if you know of people who are still taking on clients like to shovel snow, please give me their name and contact information, because I have seniors and other people that come and ask, do you know of anybody who can shovel my sidewalks or do this or do that? And the more names I have, the more I can give them. In the report, I did not have the numbers for October, I will give them to you now. The usage participants was two thousand three hundred and seventy for October plus, and then the volunteers were two hundred and eighty-two plus, so, that was pretty, pretty Looking ahead, the rest of, for December, on the Fridays, December first is Circle J Band, we have live music for an hour, ten fifteen to eleven fifteen on Fridays, Sherri Saransam is December eighth, December fifteenth is Michael Slater, and December twenty-second is Kevin Mattson. Circle J Band is country, Sherri Saransam is a harper and singer, Michael Slater is a pianist, and Kevin Mattson does songs from the forties through the sixties, so, come on down and join us. And then December eighth, people are invited to one thirty, the annual Christmas party at the senior center, and it's sponsored by the Rotary Club of Toma.
Time is up, Pam.
One thirty.
Thank you.
I'm excited, I, I hear there's going to be some school kids coming to sing, and I hear they've contacted the One Accord, so we might have musicians from that, and there's always goody bags, and it's, it's a lot of fun. Santa is supposed to be coming and visiting, and it's just fun. A new program will be starting in December, since we're very close to December, it's on Tuesdays, ten thirty to eleven, just half an hour, but it is core building, and it's, not only increases the strength of the core of your body, but that also helps with controlling the bladder a little bit better, so we encourage people to come down and join us for that on Tuesdays. And I'm still looking, everybody out there, I'm still looking for yoga, tai chi, and/or meditation instructor, volunteer instructor, because we have people that are interested in doing that. We, our little fundraiser we have during this time of the year is we have Christmas cards for ten cents a card or twelve for a dollar. So if you want Christmas cards, come on down, it helps us with the little fundraising, and it's, it's a good buy. And on fundraising, we just had the Arts and Craft Fair this last Saturday, it was successful, I do not have the final numbers in, so far the gross income is eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, I don't know how we got eight eight eight, but we did, but that is not taking, that's not the net, that's the gross, so, I haven't had time to work all the numbers. And music sponsorships, it's towards the end of the year, we could use more donations or music sponsorships, especially going into the new year, so if anyone is inclined, please come see us at the senior center. And lastly, I just want to say this is a season for being thankful and for counting our blessings. And I was going through, there's, I work with an awesome team, and I'm thankful, like, newly thankful for Parks and Rec, for Halloween, and for the Arts and Craft Fair, but, and, and the academy, Challenge Academy was involved with those and all of that, but what I'm really, and, and I'm thankful for the team of the city that I work with. It, it is so nice to be able to work with people, that we actually help each other and go towards common goals. And I will end by saying I am very thankful for my job and my senior center family, they, and they are my passion, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Pamela. Okay, moving on to planning and building inspection report, Shane.
Good evening, everyone. So you've got, in front of you, you've got the October twenty twenty-three building permit report. You can see there, we issued thirty-seven building permits, collected just under ten thousand dollar permit fees for a construction value of just over two million, just for October. And then we've got, Casey has provided her code enforcement violation report, and that's from September through October. And you can see, she's got a note here at the bottom there, that she's had three properties that have been chronic long-term violators, that she has managed to bring into compliance. It's that one percent of the properties in the city that tend to be all the work, especially on the code enforcement end of it, as far as junk vehicles, things of that nature, so she's got three of those into compliance, and she's working on a couple other before it gets much colder, so, she's hoping to get a couple other ones back into compliance also. And then she's provided a year-to-date, this is the first time she's provided this type of report, which is kind of a summary based on types of violations, so you can kind of get an idea of what, what she's working on and what types of violations she's staying out there. I would entertain any questions on the report.
Are you going to have a building total number for us toward the end of the next month, year-to-date?
Yes, Richard, I would say by next week or two here, where we get that large push in the, in the fall, we'll get us pretty close to what our actual year-to, year-end numbers will be anyway, so, yeah, I can definitely...
Okay, no further questions, we'll move on to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-three, the approval of minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, second-hand article in jewelry dealer license application for Antique Mall of Toma, and the October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three cash and investment schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Peter, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion for the approval of change of city of Toma insurance contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Glenn, Glenn, second by Kiefer, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the request by the Boys and Girls Club for City of Toma to waive all permit fees.
Move to approve.
Except electrical.
Except the commercial electrical, yes. We have a motion by Scholzey, a second by Hart, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the request to utilize economic development funds to contract Vanderwall and Associates to complete the City of Toma Comprehensive Plan Update.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Yerington, a second by Peter, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion regarding the resolution authorizing payment of monthly bills.
Move to approve payment of the bills.
Second.
Motion by Kiefer, second by Peterson, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion regarding the resolution to approve contract for city employees FSA DHC plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Kiefer, a second by Peter, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I just...
Entertain a motion regarding the approval of City of Toma Personnel Manual.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scholzey, second by Peterson, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the mass transit char ride vendor selection, contract award and lease agreement approval?
Motion to approve.
That was all me.
Thank you for being literal, Mayor.
Just the way Mike said it.
We're just doing pieces, we're just doing pieces of it tonight. I'm sorry, who had the motion?
Yeah, three, no, forget it, we had three of those.
Who's second is? All right, any discussion?
No, I think we had it off.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the appointment of Sandra Verk to the Housing Authority to fulfill the remaining term of Jessica Graul.
Move to approve.
Ending in April of twenty twenty-seven.
Motion, Yerington, second.
Second by Peterson, all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the request to move the City of Toma polling place permanently to Recreation Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zabinski, second by Glenn, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the easement approval for Alliant Energy.
Move to approve.
Motion by Kiefer, second by Peter, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen forty-five subsection one, subsection E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties and/or the investing of public funds, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Move to go to closed session.
Motion by Kiefer, second by Zabinski, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we will go to closed session.